Ask us to prioritize, that you wouldn't be averse to doing that?
Well, so I guess speak for myself, well Andy Chupetti wants it, that my thinking is that, and I thought it was kind of the sense of the group, that clearly when the project was done five or six years ago, that we talked about breathing 10 to 15 years' worth of life into Foster Plymouth River. It's now five or six years later, these projects are gonna, even if we did it right now, it's probably 18 months to two years before it finally happens. And at that point, you know, we would really be looking at perhaps with the time to look at, start looking at enrollment, figures and so forth, as Dr. Yalla talked about last week and has in the past, you know, we've seen some things go on at the kindergarten, the first grade, we don't really know what's gonna happen there. So from my perspective, I think Foster is one that we need to evaluate further in light of what happens from an enrollment point of view, in light of what, looking at the building, because we know from a programmatic point of view and educational meeting, educational needs, it's not an optimum layout. On the other hand, I think it's generally agreed that Plymouth River is a building that from an educational, programmatic perspective meets our needs and would meet our needs in the future. And since these projects both were, as you said, on the capital, capital list back when we put the three and a half million dollars in the buildings, but we weren't able to get that far because we had a, we decided somewhat arbitrarily, but I mean, that we felt we could afford X. Seems to me that if we can apply for the SOI and get MSBA to offset this by say 30 percent, it saves the town close to $200,000. And then I think this is a project that we're gonna do in any case. And Plymouth River, we're talking about, if we get funding, it's about a $600,000 project, maybe $650,000 depending what the bids are. So seems to me, since we won't, we actually be doing that for some time, you know, we would need to do the feasibility study, that wouldn't be done until sometime in the fall, which is after the middle school is done, obviously, well after the fields are done. It seems to me that I wouldn't, I wouldn't be inclined to delay that further.
Dennis, can you just refresh my memory? What is the cost for the feasibility study for windows?
About $80,000, John, you're estimating?
Plymouth River is about $80,000 and Foster is about $120.
So about $200 if you were to do both.
Sounds like a 10 percent for feasibility.
That we'd be asking town meeting to...
To fund the 80, again, from my perspective, I think we would do PRS.
You're just talking about PRS.
Fund the $80,000 feasibility study, which if for some reason MSBA did not approve, invite us into the program and then did not approve it, would certainly be work that we would need to do anyway to do that project, which is on the, is on the capital plan in any case. So, you know, again, I have some concerns on the Foster side in terms of the longer run issues, which is why I would not, at this point, think we need to rush into doing that one at this, at this time as well. So that really is kind of where I come down on it. And I don't know if Andy, you want to add anything to that?
Sure. So I favor submitting the SOIs. If I had to prioritize, I would submit for PRS because I think we just need the windows. And when we do capital projects, like in our capital budget right now, we have for lighting and other energy efficiency things, which I think, John, correct me if I'm wrong, we usually, the payback's about three years. So if this project is 600, 650, I'm just rounding up to 700, and we're getting a third paid for, plus then the payback is three years, we've almost really accelerated that to two years. So I would continue to go with it. Being on a long-range plan for the last four years, we've had it always marked that we needed it. Some people have used the word, you know, there seems like there's a great concern here about appetite. No, I, I don't wanna be, you know, just be spending money. It's sometimes a disappointment when you watch the TV here, all we talk about is building projects and we're not talking a lot about education, so I'm very aware of that. But in terms of this is a, I feel it's almost our fiduciary responsibility to keep this moving along, and that's why I would favor PRS. If we were to do, one thing I like about also submitting on Foster about is the feasibility study. I think the feasibility study will come back on PRS saying, just do the windows. On Foster, I don't know what they're gonna come back with. And I would rather have them tell us what their opinion is, to get some input from the professionals, from other sets of, other professionals, to tell us, hmm, yes, you can do the windows, but it might not be in your best interest, instead of us getting caught between an uncomfortable situation in a year, or two years, or three years, what are we actually gonna do? And so that's why I think, you know, we've always communicated, I think we should go forward with it and see what happens. We do have some time, even if accepted, you do have some time to delight, but so I just, I think I've summarized everything you said. Going back to one thing, right, in conclusion last week, was Dennis and I both were talking about going forward, and then I think Dennis suggested, well, why don't we just put in for one?
And maybe that was the prioritizing thing?
So if we had a prioritize, I would do PRS. I'm very intrigued, though, about continuing to push forward on Foster, 'cause I'd love to know what the feasibility study came back and said.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'll tell you, personally, I'd love to submit for both schools. I think the work needs to be done. You know, I'd love to get some more things done for Foster, personally. I just feel, you know, and I use the word appetite, I just feel from talking to folks in town that, you know, and I also know what it was like to go through those town meeting experiences, I'll use that word, to get the middle school approval and the fields approval, two different town meetings. And it was not easy. And there's a number of folks who are a little weary of school projects, frankly. And, you know, there are folks who are talking about tax relief in town, and rightly so. I think we all would like to see some tax relief. And I think that's aimed at trying to reduce some of the debt obligations we have, some of which are associated with our building projects. So it makes perfect sense to me, I just, you know, I don't...
Timing issue?
I think it's a timing issue, I really do. You know, I think if it was a year from now, if, you know, I think we're not even done with the middle school yet. You know, we're not even completely finished with the fields project yet. And, you know, the, the idea of starting up something new, and you're right, it wouldn't necessarily be tomorrow, but you'd have to have a town, you'd have to have approval for funding within a certain period of time, you'd wanna be moving forward, and we all know, in this, this fall, it'll be four years since we were invited into the capital pipeline by the MSBA for the middle school. And it's not like any of that four years, we were sitting around doing nothing. So if you're saying it's gonna take two years, and I don't disagree with you in terms of, you know, start to finish, there's stuff going on each of those months in the two years. There's the feasibility, there's getting an owner's project manager, there's getting a designer, there's getting a contractor. You know, the, the project works a little bit differently than, than what I know from the model school program, but it still has kind of all of those things involved, and it's a lot of work. And I, I think I agree with you in terms of our focus on building projects versus education. I think that, I'm thrilled that we're, you know, we spent so much time talking about technology this fall and into the winter, and what that can do to improve, you know, the educational services we deliver and prepare us and prepare our kids to be taking the next schedule of testings that are, that are coming down the pipe. And in fact, you know, we have money earmarked in our capital budget for that technology. And, you know, if we're looking at $80,000 or potentially $200,000 in feasibility studies, that's gonna likely take away from some other things that we want and need in the capital budget, and some of that's technology. So if push came to shove, I'd say now is the time to focus on technology and other initiatives that we're looking to pursue educationally. Not that the windows aren't important, 'cause they remain important, I think we need to keep them in the capital budget for future time. We can come back and pursue an SOI with the MSBA next year, perhaps. I just, I just think the timing's bad. That's just my personal opinion.
With all due, with all fairness, though, there's a big difference if we were just go for PRS of a $600, $650, $700,000 project than the middle school, which was $50 million plus.
I don't think folks in town are willing to spend, you know, $10 on another building project for this, for $650.
Like, I guess also, you know, also when I think about...
But it's a fair point.
I also think about, like, when we talk about our capital budget, each year we submit for capital, and I think the last few years, we submitted about a billion, a billion, a million too, not a billion too, a million.
Perspective.
A million too, not a billion too. So this is, and it's been on those plans, so it's, we've always submitted that much each year. And so that's where I'm, that's just my frame of reference, but...
Yeah, and I, and actually, you know, Dennis took a look at some numbers today, and he's gonna put together a memo that, you know, we'll look at and talk about in terms of our, our capital request. And, you know, I think it's a fair point, we've submitted, you know, the last couple of years, a million two, that's been reduced, last year it was reduced down to 550, but in past years, it's been a much smaller percentage of, of the request, and, and not really aligned with the percentage of our budget as compared with the entire town. And certain things keep getting kicked down the road. So at some point, you know, they need to be addressed, and the windows are, are part of that. I just don't think it's the right time to go through this process, to begin it right now. I think, I think it's something that we should do, I just don't think now is the right time. Wazza, sorry.
Yeah. I have a question, with, since we've put these projects on the capitalist for a number of years, does the, are we required to prepare a feasibility study for capital for doing these projects?
No.
Okay. So Andy brought up in the last discussion about, you know, if, and I think Doc was talking about it too, if we just planned on doing these ourselves, would the timing be easier and, you know, we wouldn't have to spend the money on the feasibility study? And it's a smaller project, so yes, we get money back from the state, but, you know, I would like to see, if John has some time, if we waited a little bit, but we did a little more investigating of what, what are the costs of, you know, we know the cost of the project, but what's all the timing comparing of, what, can we get it done ourselves? Can we break it into pieces to get it done, instead of waiting for the long period of time for the state, doing the feasibility study? You know, the town, we know that, hopefully the projections are coming through, we may have more capital, or these one-time projects may be a little bit more feasible for our town. So I would like to investigate that a little bit before jumping on this right now, because...
We didn't flush those numbers out, but, you know, we would wanna update...
Will pay for themselves, the question is...
How long?
How long? Interesting. Right.
There was just an article in tonight's ledger about Pembroke, and they're looking at accelerated repair program and all, and four schools. And their rate is 52 to 56.
What rate? 52.
52 to 56, I think it was 56, I'm higher than you.
Quincy's middle school got over 80 percent. Okay, Paul, go ahead.
Just a couple of thoughts, and I wasn't here, and I know we talked about this in the past, and I'm not a big advocate of waiting necessarily, because as I'm learning, sometimes there's just enough money to go around for the things that we, that should be done and need to be done, especially for the kids, the schools, you know, education. But I'm trying to be practical with this whole process. Points made on both sides were very good. There's priorities besides the windows that I'd be concerned about if we use the money. You know, you know, I, and I think I'd normally be inclined to support it, but I think I would be probably, feel a lot better about the whole project in terms of supporting it next time, if it, if it comes to be, and if that involves us working with everybody here or the administration to find out to the extent we can, the feasibility, or some more information about it. But, you know, again, I do know, I don't like to wait, but I know there's so many priorities, and at this point, I just, for the record, I would probably be inclined to wait one more year.
I think you all know how I feel about maintenance, stand by for Thursday night. There are a lot of issues that I feel we have to deal with in the area of maintenance, and frankly, this is, this is one of them. If we don't do it this year, I'll be on the point to, to bring this subject back up next year. So if you're asking me, do I wanna proceed this year or next year, I'm gonna say I'm going to recommend that we delay this issue for one year because of some other things that I think we need to do sooner.
Okay. Wazza, your feelings unchanged?
Yeah, I think we need to wait and get some more information.
I'd like to make a motion. I move that we not recommend any SOIs for, for the MSBA for this year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Can I just have one clarification?
Yes.
On the feasibility study, if you move forward, that is reimbursed at the rate?
It should be reimbursed at the same rate, correct?
Okay, just because there's talk about $80,000, that's $80,000 spent?
Right, it would be $80,000 less the reimbursement percentage.
Fair enough.
Yeah, it should, should be. Anything else? All those in favor of Dennis's motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Let the record show five to two in favor of waiting and not proceeding with an SOI. Madam Selectwoman, we won't be needing that.
Because I share a view with Ryan, as much as I'd like to say this, this is the other capital plan, since 2012, and we had hoped to do it with the three and a half million until the ADA stuff hit us in the face. So I think, thank you all, I think you've made the right decision, I don't think the appetite's up there this year.
Okay, well, thanks for that, I know that took a lot of time, but I think it was a very important thing to discuss at length. Moving on to new business, we have the secondary program of studies, 2014, 2015. And before you start, Ellen, I know I've asked this before, but is there a way we can move the sixth grade into it, because it's part of the middle school?
Versus they separate curriculum?
Yeah, versus the fact that it's still with the curriculum for the elementary.
I think part of it has to do with the policy, isn't it thought, about, the committee has to review elementary?
No, I don't, no. The policy is that the school committee should receive curriculum every year. At the elementary level, we do it using the curriculum flyers, and we do it usually at the end of September, thereabouts. And at the secondary, it's through viewing the program of study. I think one of the things that's changed, because I know you've mentioned that before, Ray, and it's a valid point, is that we have changed the sixth grade model several times recently, and we'll be changing it again with the opening of the new school. And so, for example, this year, we're exploring whether, you know, we do elective programs or we do an exploratory kind of program. The sixth grade model will change next year, and good opportunity to say to the folks at home who have parents, or parents of children moving to sixth grade, because of that big bump up that's anticipated, people have been very concerned about, and I'm gonna sort happening with class size there. Right now, the sixth grade teachers are all either math, science, social studies, or English certified, or both. And right now, each of those teachers teaches four sections in their, their specialty subject area. And then there's a fifth period that has broken up, been broken up into some once-a-side call kinds of programs. So next year, all of those subject certified teachers in the sixth grade will teach five courses in their subject area. So that picks up additional sections that will help with the class size. It'll still increase somewhat over what it is this year in the instructional block, but not a lot. And that's why there's that one additional sixth grade teacher, 1.5 actually, five, the .5 is for foreign language, which we know, we need more instruction in that. But the one is to allow us some flexibility to do some of the kinds of things that have been done in that last, the, the current model, which had some additional math and some additional English time and presentation time. So the model's gonna change again this year, so...
So will that allow us for next year to include it, with the changing of the model and the opening of the middle school, to include the information in there?
Yeah, assuming that the model, if we get three months into the model and we think, yeah, this is the one we're gonna stick with for at least the foreseeable future.
I would agree with Ray, I think we should have it. I mean, it's either, either part of the secondary school or they're not. And I know we, we sort of treat them a little half and half, but I'm all for including it, so...
And we don't leave them out, I didn't have anything...
No, I know they're not left out, I mean, this is...
We have curriculum, we have a special night for those parents to come, and we have curriculum.
No, no, I understand, I'm just saying this is, I would agree, I think it should be in this document.
But, but it was also a good time to be able to say to people who are worried about class size, that we thought of that, and Derek has come up with a very good plan, I think. And in terms of math, science area, it's a STEM kind of course, which is very much part of the testing requirements coming in front of us, so...
So it sounds like maybe next year, maybe a little...
Maybe a year.
Maybe it makes sense.
Yeah, no, I agree. So getting back to education topics, here we are, our annual review of the secondary program of studies. And as you can see from the memo, there really are very few revisions, there are none at this point for the middle school level. And I'll just go through it in order of the way that it's in the actual program of studies. The first thing, in the high school information section, the scheduling guidelines are updated because there are new state requirements for beginning with the class of 2016, that any student to be admitted to a Massachusetts State College or university would be required to take four years of math. That would be our current sophomores. And then in 2017, in addition to the four years of math, students to be admitted to Massachusetts State College or universities would also have to have three years in the lab science for admission. So essentially Paula updated this information to give parents and students a heads up that those requirements are changing.
Does that mean essentially that seniors now have to take physics and calculus, where maybe they didn't have to anymore before?
Well, actually, we've always had high percentages, even though we had a three-year math requirement, you know, our, the percentage of kids that take four years is very high. And in science, as a matter of fact, when I was the science chair, we had a fair number of our high school kids taking five years of a science, because they took the kind of traditional sequence of biology, chemistry, physics. And they also may have taken an AP course or an elective like electronics or environmental science.
Or two AP science classes, right?
So, so we really, I don't think this is gonna impact us as much in terms of needing to add more courses or anything, but courses are there, and high percentage of kids would meet these requirements anyway.
Well, and I think because so many kids that are looking at colleges, the colleges that they're looking at, the level of college are requiring, they have four years of math.
Yeah, already, exactly, they are.
So the kids know that they need to take that extra year, even before this requirement.
Do the, do the Massachusetts schools limit the number of AP credits you can use to get...
I'm not familiar with that, are you, Paula?
I don't think so.
I just, I, I would hate for them to require more in high school. You take it, maybe it's an AP level, you get college credit for it, but then you don't, they don't give you the standing or whatever for it, once you get to college.
Pretty private school, they'll need a really dependent...
It really varies from school to school. They might give you, allow you to skip an intro course, you know, for placement.
Or you still have to pay for, yeah, right.
Exactly.
Doesn't serve you any money.
Depends, it depends on the school and the situation.
So like Carol said, this is consistent with the advice that we frequently give our kids anyway, so it's not that big of a change from what we have been doing. So in art, speaking of AP, a new course description for AP Studio ID 3D Design, and we currently do have students taking it, but given the fact we have 1.0 teacher who does the 3D, the ceramics and wheel throwing, she's had those kids working within another ceramics class in an independent study. And so the plan would probably continue to be the same, since we don't think there would be enough kids who would sign up for the AP to have that be a separate class section. The foreign language, Advanced French Literature was deleted because they changed the AP French exam, the college board did. So right now, it's the Language and Culture, I think, AP Language and Culture would be continued, but that, we had the separate Advanced French Literature in the current program of studies that has been deleted. Also, we have been providing AP China's Chinese this year, but we put in a new course description for it, so that currently is running. And I think with the Chinese, we're in a situation of maybe alternating, you know, again, given the fact that we only have 1.0 teacher who's trying to cover the full span of Chinese one, all the way up to AP Chinese. In library media, here's where the two new courses are, which I'm excited about both of these. If you recall, when we went to the high school, Paula and Sarah and the students from the tech squad had made a presentation, and at that point, they were in the first course we had added the tech squad this past year, which actually is in the business section of the program of studies. And so now we're including this tech squad help desk, which everyone is very enthused about. And the idea would be, after the kids complete the tech squad, that they would be, depending on the period that they would be available, work with the library media staff in order to continue providing help to teachers, students, staff, anybody who has technology issues or want for help. The other thing, which I also enthused about, is of course the social experience, and it's focused on social media. And as you know, social media impacts everything in society now, and so I think it's a great opportunity for our kids to be exposed and to be able to explore a really 21st century topic, one that's very relevant in so many ways. The peer mediation, we've had peer mediation before. In the past, we called it peacekeepers, because that was the name of the original peer mediation curriculum that we had in place. So it's just changing it from peacekeepers to the title peer mediation with a different course description. And the last one in science is what was physical science is being replaced with integrated science with a new course description, which reflects some of the curriculum revision, as you know, we've been working on in science. Essentially, what it is, is the physical science had the chem and the physical science, but this is adding the life science to it as well. Again, because we, we want to prepare our kids for the MCAS science assessments, which given park, are not going to go away. And if you hadn't heard, they have put out for public comment the new Massachusetts Science Curriculum Framework, which is based on the new generation science framework standards, but not totally. Some states have adopted it as is, and so similar to what we've done here in Massachusetts is that it's the Massachusetts Science Curriculum Framework, but it's aligned to the, the new generation standards. And so thankfully, given all the different mandates and initiatives that we're working on, as you well know, the commissioner proposed a two-year phase, and which we were obviously very happy to hear that. And so right now, they are available on the Department of Ed website, you can look at them. According to Katie, many of the changes in terms of topics will be more at the elementary level. And part of that is because the previous science curriculum workshop had, I mean, curriculum had grade spans, so it would be like, here's what we... So it would be like, here's what we expect the kids to know, K to 2, 3 to 5. And the new curriculum frameworks are going to be grade level with topics assigned to certain grade levels. Including kindergarten. And so, you know, that's something that you're gonna be hearing more about. And as I mentioned when we were talking about textbook adoptions, that certainly that's something that Katie and her staff have already started looking at. And clearly, we wouldn't be recommending those adoptions until things would be finalized in terms of the curriculum frameworks. So as you can see down the bottom, we have Parent Information Nights. February 25th, they're for parents of students entering 9 through 12 at the Hingham High School at 7:00. March 6th, parents entering grades 7 and 8 at the Middle School at 7:00. And May 1st, parents of entering grades 6, Hingham Middle School students at 7:00. The other thing too, I just wanna remind everybody is, a Program of Studies is what you offer to the students. It doesn't mean that we run all of these courses. So what this is, is providing the Program of Studies that are being offered and then through the programming process, then based on FTEs and the signup for the students, then decisions are made as far as what courses are run or not run. So there are some of the courses that are in here that do not end up being run, but that's actually a minority, I would say, just a few courses here and there. Any questions?
Go.
Question either, Eleanor, can you call up? Tell me a little bit about how the social experience class has come to fruition, to offering.
Actually, it was a suggestion by one of the teachers who was trying to teach it. She's teaching in TV production now and she has a background in speech communication, rhetoric, writing. So she thought it would be a wonderful opportunity to provide what she knows about journalism with what's currently going on in social media today. And also, I think from observing the students and her own children.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
I think we all could take it.
Yeah.
It doesn't need a test.
I think we actually need that kind of course in the middle school.
Oh, that's a good idea, yeah.
Start into using some of those tools and perhaps without knowing.
Well, maybe we try it next year and then we go.
That's why, that's why there's a newfound thing on the Verizon website where you can set parental controls for your child's phone. It's a wonderful new thing I've discovered.
Until they know how to change it.
That's right.
Right, right.
I know, they won't do all, they won't do all.
And one of the things we talked about too is best practice, when you look at other districts that are going to one-to-one, you know, personal computing initiatives, is that the students take a digital citizenship, is what they refer to it, a digital citizenship course or training before they would get their devices. And so certainly that would be something I think we all think should be done.
I had a question. In grade 11, the history, so here you have the AP US History, didn't, that changed last year from a lab, it's a full course now, it's not just the lab anymore.
Right. That changed two or three years ago?
Right, yeah.
Two or three years ago.
So wouldn't that be the required course, American studies, wouldn't the AP elect, it's not really elective, it could fulfill that requirement, right? So shouldn't it be?
Should be a typo.
Yeah, should we maybe recharacterize it?
Should be just AP US History, maybe? It's on page 47.
Oh, you mean including that in the description of it?
It's not talking at the top of the page.
On page 47.
Page 47.
This where, so you have grade 10, required course World History II, Advanced, or Advanced Placement World History. So grade 11 would be American Studies or AP US History.
Yeah.
Because it's not the lab anymore, right?
Right.
It's the full course.
So that hasn't, that.
And that would fulfill the requirement.
That introduction needs to be revised to reflect what's happened. Yeah.
You need to add an or, right?
Yeah, you need an or.
It's yours.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to say, and I mentioned this before, the Hingham Tech Squad thing is just super, and that's really an advanced placement course for life.
Yes, for sure.
Really, you're right.
Yeah.
Because those skills and capabilities are gonna stand, those kids are just great stand throughout their lives.
And as we teachers frequently say, is the best way to learn is to teach something. And so those kids will have a great experience, particularly, I think, teaching and supporting adults, you know, preparing them for the real world.
Particularly challenging, right?
Yeah.
Ellen, I would, having flipped through this, looking at the computer apps course and the business technology, I think we're gonna have to look at.
Say that again, Liza, I don't hear you.
The computer apps course.
Oh, okay.
Page 11. You know, adapting that even over time is maybe changing it to the digital training and because, and when the middle school kids have their devices, they'll be done. But I'm sure that there are.
And it's part of a graduation requirement as well. And right now, that's, that course is the main way that kids meet the graduation requirement. But it may be that there can be other options in addition to upgrading the course.
I'm sure there are technology skills that are very relevant for graduation requirements, but.
And we have, over the years, updated that course description as technology has changed. We've done it frequently, so that definitely would be something we would expect to do. It is also part of the performance-based capstone, one of the capstones?
Or the mission, I mean, the expectations for student learning.
Right. It's one of the.
When the middle school comes online, if you ask things like that, we have.
We can update it, Derek.
Ellen, or maybe this is more for Derek, when you do your kid, parents of 7th and 8th grade, Hingham Middle School, I think you really should emphasize, page 33 more, the chart of the typical sequence for math. Because that is so now defined, I've heard plenty of parent, you know, a handful of parents, plenty of parents realizing if they're, they didn't realize in 7th grade that really could affect them all the way to senior year.
I totally agree.
And I know Mr. Holly mentioned it a couple of years ago, how the whole changed, but I don't think enough people really understand how impactful, if you're not in the right sequence starting in 7th grade, that does impact you going to high school.
It's a great suggestion.
And it's always a challenge, having been the normal chairman, making that clear because on the one hand, it does have an impact. Fewer choices to get where you wanna go if you don't start out in the track earlier. On the other hand, there simply are some students who aren't ready to be in that foot. So you're looking at where you wanna be at the end, but if you're not ready to jump in the boat, that's a challenge too. So one of the things that we did hear a lot in clear last year, particularly when, I think it was when we were doing the focus group, when we were selecting the principal, was that parents of children entering 7th grade really need a lot more information. It's not that we haven't provided information either through meetings or writings or whatever, but they seem to indicate that they need a lot more information about how teachers actually make the recommendations and what the recommendations mean. And obviously, there isn't the opportunity for those teachers who teach 100, 220 kids to meet individually with every parent about those recommendations. But we did hear that more information about making those kinds of choices at the individual level is really something important to parents. So Derek is aware of that and we're gonna try to get out more information in a variety of ways, how we handle the parent night, what can go out ahead of time, what to emphasize, and also to get more information out about the recommendation process.
Yeah, and actually, the input, and actually you were the advisor, is that people were pretty positive about the grade 5 to 6 transition, that's the thing we used to always keep working on, trying to improve, but there were many more issues and questions that came up about the going from the grade 6 to the grade 7, where you start with the levels and, you know, kids are recommended.
It came up at Alltown PTO too, last spring, and a very similar theme to what we had heard, so that's something that's gotta be a high priority issue.
And Derek actually has been meeting, I've been attending meetings with him and the department directors every other month, and that's been one of the number one topics that they've been discussing. And he's asked all the directors to provide those guidelines or criteria for how do teachers in the various subject areas make recommendations for the levels when they go into grade 7.
Going on that point, when I was doing the Hingham Middle School review, Master Plan Review, Liza's on there with me.
Yes, yes.
I think we found in one of the statistics, basically like, I'm just going from root memory, so I could be off, but 50% of the kids, once you went to that 7th grade, were in the upper standard, 45% were in the advanced.
It's close to that, yeah.
So the point, I think, where the frustration from the parents is, the numbers are so close, 50 and 45, what is that dividing point? That why is Sally Sue getting in and not Billy Bob, or, you know, something like that? And I think that's where the parents are, would like to know a little bit more, when the numbers are that close.
And the reason too, it's a great idea, is to be more proactive, is the directors and the administrators deal with parent requests for information, asking those questions and, you know, pursue overrides. And instead of spending so much time, you know, dealing with individual parents who have questions about those recommendations, it makes so much more sense to be more proactive and make that criteria a lot more available and, you know, to do training with the parents so that they know ahead of time, rather than being in a reactive situation. Not that that's ever gonna go away in terms of individual kids, but I think that's gonna improve it.
Yeah, kind of along those lines, not math, but music, I think that, we talked about this, you know, going from 5th grade to 6th grade, very often, 5th graders are told, well, if you wanna play an instrument in 6th grade, you've gotta play an instrument in 5th grade. But that's not a hard and fast rule, but it's conveyed as if it is a hard and fast rule. And I think it should be made clear that you don't absolutely have to play an instrument in 5th grade and you still could have an opportunity to play one in 6th grade.
Right, but they do recommend that.
Sure.
Helpful.
But it's recommend versus required.
Right, I mean, you may have your own lessons for piano at home and wanna, you know, be in chorus for a year, and, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Anything else?
That was a very enjoyable educational discussion, by the way.
Wasn't it?
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay, anything else? We have the quarterly financial update, John.
The numbers of education.
The numbers of education.
The numbers of education.
It's always an education.
This quarterly, the quarterly report is as of January 23rd, 2014. We have expended year-to-date now 40.2% of the FY14 operating budget. You know, you'd think we're halfway through, so it'd be more like 50%, but really, the big expenditure start when teachers come back in September, so we're at 40.2% right now. An additional 49.9% or 50% of the budget is encumbered, that's really payrolls and salaries that are there. And then as I forecast out, I'm forecasting an additional, this is hourly wages and other expenditures that would occur, such as contracts and expenditures, supplies and continued purchasing throughout the rest of the year, another 9.1% of the budget. So at this time right now, I'm looking at about 1.5% of the budget, or approximately $625,000 that's uncommitted, yeah, as of this forecast. What I find is special education, the tuitions, the transportation and expenditures, they account for over $550,000 of that, $625,000 of uncommitted funds right now. When we look at the individual components, so 550, and that would include the tuitions that we know that are encumbered and also some tuitions for highly likely work, you know, situations or discussions that are ongoing with parents right now. So important, very important, I think, to understand that, you know, special education expenditures can be very volatile, so they can change very, very quickly. So by the end of the year, I would expect this number to change, you know, as we get better information and as situations get resolved, the numbers either go up or down. When we look at the overall variance here, you know, what that's comprised of, the sheet shows a plus is a positive variance, or you look at that, that would be expenditures we're estimated right now to be running under what we've budgeted. And if there are negative variance, the expenditures are planned to be running above what we budgeted. Salary accounts are accounting for about $150,000. And I took Dennis's route on this, I rounded the numbers, okay, so, you know, it's.
Slowly, but sure.
It may be more or less than $150,000, but, you know, it's rounded, okay? And then that really represents, we haven't hired a custodian position that's in our budget for the supervisor, and plus, we had a very good hiring season and we had some changes to personnel after the budget was snapped last year. Utilities and gasoline, now Saturday I spoke about this and I thought it was about $100,000, but I went back and looked and initially I considered the middle school that I would have to be covering electricity, but if we take over in March, I'll have to cover some heat as well, I'll have to cover some water and some other utilities, so that variance. So what's driving that is really the possibility, or the very high likelihood, I think, of taking, taking, not occupancy, but substantial completion of the middle school sometime around the March timeframe, this is projected in March right now, plus the cold winter that we've had right now, the FY forecast for heating is low by about $42,000. So those two combinations come up to about $120,000. And I say about, it could be more or less, I'm not sure how long, you know, when we take that middle school over, typically, you know, you're supposed to heat it down until the 15th of May, but this wouldn't be operating, so we could probably keep the heat very low, so we wouldn't drain a lot there. But I think the electricity would have that sort of managed because it's not being highly used and most of the lights would be off. But I think that 120 would do, but as we proceed through the rest of this year, that number itself may go up or down as well.
We should benefit from the thermal panels that keep, so once it's heated, those panels that go around the outside, the walls, on the interior walls, will keep the heat in longer.
Especially at that time of year, when there's not much exterior variation.
Right, exactly, I mean, unless it's March 1st, then we're looking at March, April, May and June, so I think, I think we have a good number here. But I just, at this point in time, you just can't really totally commit to any of the numbers that you're seeing right now, but this is the rationale behind them. So special education, out of district tuition, specialized transportation, specialized services and VOTEC, and these are all less the circuit breaker, that's running positive about $590,000. About 530 right now, tuition, starting transportation, and we have one less VOTEC student than we had budgeted last year, so that's an additional $22,000. And we've been able to manage the transportation, so there's an additional $10,000 freed up in that bucket. Contracts, a plus a thousand, those are, those wash. I would think that as we proceed into the springtime and we take a look at all the issues that have occurred because of the cold weather, that we probably will have additional expenditures and that, that one probably will slide to the negative at some point. And then other, that's paper supply and inventories, these are all at proper levels and I would expect spending on those accounts.
I did give that.
Who's that? Sorry, sorry? Sorry, sorry?
Could you?
Let me repeat. I think the other, the supplies and stuff, we should remain.
That was not my text.
I think we'll be in good shape with supplies and the other account anyway, so that will be pretty much on budget coming into the year. For capital budget, we purchased a van, we've done a number of capital projects, they've some have come, you know, a couple hundred dollars over budget, and we purchased this van and it's $2,400 on the budget. I would expect that the self-energy management system specification, that's going out this week, plus, we also transferred some money from copiers to do the phone system itself, so, and those bids have not been awarded yet, so we don't know what they're going to be, but to the extent that they're over by a few dollars or so, I would expect that I would use this variance towards those. We certainly won't overspend capital though. So capital, we'd either come in zero or we'd come in, you know, slightly positive by the end of the year. by the end of the year.
Where does things stand on the phone system for South Elementary? The town has not awarded that budget?
No, Steve was evaluating those bids last week, so I gave him a call this week to see, you know, what the status is and where we're at. They are not going out to rebid, so we know that we will have an award coming. And, so I expect hopefully this week, you know, it's unfortunate today, but probably by Thursday, I'll know exactly what that number is, so we'll know where we are relative to the twenty-five hundred, twenty-five thousand that we have appropriated for it.
Do you have that on your agenda, Irma, do you know, for Thursday, a bid award?
How much did you go for?
That's what, I'm not sure, Irma.
If it's under fifty thousand, that's to just sign us and tell us.
Oh, yeah, no, no, this'll be the phone system, so it'd be well over fifty thousand, if there'd be four buildings.
Yeah, I haven't been told this.
Okay, yeah, so Steve's, I mean, the evaluation process, he has to check references and make sure he does his, you know, crosses the Ts and dots the Is, so that can take a few, several days, you know, a couple weeks, depending on how much troubleshooting you're doing.
Just hopeful that once we get that, and we know he's gonna do it, you know, we can do something to try to expedite the installation, if we can do it, you know, probably not in February at this point, but maybe if we can do it during the April break.
It's possible, April vacation's a real possibility.
Right.
That will require new wiring, too, because that has CAT three wiring, we'll have to be rewired to CAT five.
I agree.
Yeah, I think so, yeah. So that will be a lot of pulling, so really, you can't do that activity while there's kids in the classes, you know. And I'm sure they didn't bid it out, considering overtime.
Any other questions? So, John, the special ed, positive variance at this time, that was the basis of the budget projection for fifteen, right, based on
Your
Right.
That's correct, that's correct, yes.
We have essentially, I think we have fifty-four youngsters right now, or we did a couple weeks ago, and we're projecting fifty-four.
I mean, they said, you know, to the extent we can retain the kids, that's good, we're spending a little bit more on contracted services to retain those students, and, you know, you have a couple graduating, so there's a little bit of luck involved, and there's some good management involved, too, I think Liz is doing a good job managing these expenses.
Bringing two youngsters back to start this year, that's huge.
Yep.
For the kids, as well as for the buck.
Right.
Any other questions? Any questions from the audience?
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John. Thank you.
Okay, the middle school modular situation. Okay, oh, so, as you know, we purchased five modular classrooms that fit together like a puzzle in the summer of two thousand eight, to help alleviate short-term class size situation and space needs at the middle school, while we were waiting word from the MSBA on a project, Fast Forward Building a School. So, we will not be needing, obviously, the modular classrooms anymore, the existing middle school will be demolished. We have been looking into for several months, the possibility of marketing for sale, for resale, these classrooms. Little tricky, because they're not standalones, they're not class, 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 they fit together like a jigsaw puzzle, and they don't have plumbing, and they also don't comply with the new eighth edition of the Commonwealth Building Code. So, there's some challenges to marketing for resale.
What part don't they comply with, with the building?
You know, I don't have the answer to that off the top of my head, but I know that they were not constructed under, to comply with the eighth edition, which came out two years ago. I think the twenty-twelve, January twenty-twelve. So, we've been working with Vanguard, who's the company, which is the company that supplied them to us, Bob DiAngelo, we've consulted with him a number of times, met with him back in December on site, and worst-case scenario, absolute worst-case scenario that we want to avoid, is having to demolish them, and even worse, pay to demolish them. Okay? So that's what we're, by all means, that's not an option, as far as I'm concerned, okay? So in my mind, the worst-case scenario is that we're not able to resell them, but that Vanguard would take them off our hands for the cost of removing them from site. We still have the axles and the wheels, but there is some work associated with dismantling and removing from site, obviously. That's, the logistics of that is important because of the timing. If school ends, whatever date it ends, in June, we need them gone the next day, essentially, so that we can start the demolition work that summer, and get things ready for the site work and what have you. It's more important now, because the construction schedule was expedited by about two, two-and-a-half months, so that, you know, we really could get a lot of the site work done prior to school opening, that we thought would be happening in Thanksgiving, by Thanksgiving. So, we have to figure out what the value of the modulators is. Couple different procedures, depending on what the perceived value is, whether we'd have to go through a formal procurement process, or we could actually have a public auction. If we were to go that route, in any event, we're gonna have to declare them surplus. I've talked to Ted about this a number of times, as of last week, he can't come up with any use in the town immediately.
What about donating them to a charity?
Could do that, we'd want that charity to be able to come and take them off-site, and not charge us, and us not to have to incur costs. I mean, that's, that's the key, you know. One, if we could recoup some, some value for them, that would be ideal. We may be able to do that. Vanguard isn't sure, and they think the likely purchaser in a resale, resale would be a charter school, or some other school district in New England somewhere, private school, where they have temporary space needs. And if it were a private school or a chartered school, then it really wouldn't matter about the building code and some other things, because they wouldn't necessarily have to comply with some of those things. If there isn't a buyer readily identified, you know, Vanguard will take them, will store them, and find some suitor later on, and, you know, obviously, they would benefit from that, to the extent there was, there was a sale.
So, could, could we do that, or any kind of consignment deal with them? Where they take it and store it, and whatever, and they say their costs are X, anything that they get above X, we would share in?
Perhaps, we haven't gotten that far, I mean, we've talked about, you know, obviously, if they were to come and take them, there's costs associated with dismantling and removing them, and taking them off-site, what are those costs? What are storage costs for what period of time? So we certainly could talk about, you know, talk about that. So, initially, when we put this on the agenda, we did it with the, with the mindset of taking a vote tonight to declare them surplus. I don't know if we need to do that tonight, in talking with Ted, in talking with Bob DiAngelo, seems like we have more time, that there isn't an immediacy, that if we were going to issue an RFP for them, that, you know, we could do that, you know, a couple of months from now, we wouldn't have to do it that quickly. And I think that one of the things we need to do is get a number from Brait, in terms of the costs associated with, well, one, we can get a, you know, we don't want to have to use, but a demolition cost, obviously, just so we can know what the reality is. But, costs associated with dismantling and removing from the site, and we can use that as, as part of the valuation, because otherwise, the value of the modulators is what someone's willing to bid for them, they have no intrinsic value, other than what we, a cost basis that we paid for them five years ago, but that's not a realistic value on the market now, because of resale and the circumstances. So, I don't think we necessarily have to take a vote to declare them surplus tonight. I think we likely will need to do that in the next couple of months, but I think we should probably have a better sense of the plan in place first, and I was in touch with, with Bob DiAngelo at Vanguard, just the end of last week, and, you know, he confirmed that, you know, his company is on board to take them off our hands, remove them from the site. You know, if we were to go through an RFP process, they might even be, you know, a bidder, if they were able to kind of identify a secondary buyer. So, I think, I think maybe we explore that a little bit further, kind of, you know, identify the exact steps before we take the vote.
Is there a scenario that you can envision where we wouldn't declare them surplus?
No.
No, I mean, again, I'm not, I'm not
I mean, we would need to do it, right, we would, it's a fair point, we would need to do it, I just, to the extent that anyone felt uncomfortable without more information, I didn't want to say, we have to vote tonight, because we don't have to vote tonight. We certainly can vote tonight.
I think I'd like more information, I mean, personally.
I mean, basically, I'd like more information, too.
You don't, you don't need to vote tonight, I think it was important to get the information out there, that there is going to be somewhat of a dilemma here, and we're exploring options, people often ask me about it, well, what's gonna happen to the modulators, and so to get it socialized is an important thing. Also, hopefully, might lessen the amount of time we have for discussion at a subsequent meeting, where we have other big things on the agenda, so.
Any?
With the demolition of the middle school, we get X percentage back from the state for that demolition? We get reimbursed for the demolition, right?
No.
We don't get anything?
No, the costs of demolition are included in the budget for construction.
Okay.
So, okay, so So we don't get anything, other than we get anything back.
They don't reimburse the demolition.
No. And then what did we pay again for these five years ago?
Seven hundred thousand?
We appropriated seven hundred thousand, but they came in at less than that, because we had to build a connecting cord away, we had to have a transformer on a pole, and so there's some costs in, in terms of readying the site, if you will, not substantial, but, so they came in less than the seven hundred thousand, the actual bit, quote, and so, it's been a good bargain, actually. I mean, if you look at that cost, that's a little over a hundred thousand dollars a year, and that's about nine, a little over nine thousand dollars a month, and that's a little under two thousand dollars a classroom, you know, that's, they've given us good life for the money that we spent. It doesn't mean that they have
It wasn't like we didn't use them.
No.
Right. No, they served the purpose.
They served the purpose for six, it'll be six years.
And they're still in very good shape, so it's really a shame.
Nice to find a home for them.
That's one thing that Vanguard commented on, is, is because he came down in December and took a look at them, and they're in terrific shape, and he thought that the prospect of resale was, was quite good.
I do sort of like Dennis's idea about if we could get a consignment. I do agree they're in good shape, because I remember going to middle school, middle school open house, I almost like going to that classroom than the
Mostly the
They're bigger and wider.
And air-conditioned, right?
And air-conditioned.
And air-conditioned, right.
The one thing that I'm concerned about is at town meeting, not anyone here, because we were on the school committee, and it could have been someone from like advisory or whatever, saying that if we did go with the middle school, with these modules, the nice thing is, we always had a resale value, and there's always something else, that's how I recall it, and so I just hope that we don't get into a thing where, you know, we get accused of saying, well, we could have always done something else, and I, because I sort of remember it that way, that
I don't really doubt, I do, I do think that there would be folks at town meeting, if we had to demolish them, we'd just find that very, very offensive.
Yeah, no, I
I don't think anybody here wants to demolish it either, so.
Absolutely not, especially if we had to pay
Right.
To demolish them.
My great fear is that if we put out an RFP, then somebody comes along and says, oh, I'll buy those, and has in mind, there'll be a cabana thing for my pool, or there'll be something for my mother-in-law, and
A new office for the house.
Right, and are naive in understanding that, first of all, they're not stand-alone units, and secondly, one could not simply pack them off to their home without all kinds of permitting things, which likely would take years and months.
We took them to the swap area over at the
And then we could end up in a, in a time crunch.
They need a
The advantage of Vanguard is that we know we can get them out of there in a reasonable time, and Roger was very good, and the axles are underneath, and the tires are stored somewhere else, and so, you know, they are ready to go for someone who has the professional ability, but someone very naive could think, oh, I can think of a lot of uses for, for these, and then for any number of logistics reasons, could not make it happen in the time that we need. So, I hope that Vanguard can come up with something.
You know, so we also have a list serve, too, I mean, now that we've had this discussion, I could throw that out onto the business managers' list serve, and which goes not only to Massachusetts, but to other business managers throughout the country.
That's a good point, Bob's
And tell them, you know, that there's, that these things will be coming available, is there any interest out there, we're not sure how they'll be disposed of, but just give a general description, and
Yeah.
See if there's, you know, interest, so
So the school committee intends to
Yes, yeah.
These are ways to
Which district should they come?
I'd have to go, right, you know, it's gonna be crunch time, you know, you've got all these balls in the air, and we've gotta get them, we gotta get them out, you can see somebody naively getting involved, and then getting it over their head.
Right, well, we
I think the idea is staying with the
We definitely have to have a plan, you know, we started talking about it in building committee, you know, because substantial completion is approaching, and then starting to set things in motion for a transition, and, and getting a schedule set, because Brait is moving, even with this weather, they're moving fast, which is a good thing.
Can you just remind us, or give us an update, when you say Ted couldn't find, or couldn't come up with a use for them, what were some of the, the ideas that were, that were crossed, do you know?
Well, I, I mean, I know that there's a group looking at this building, looking at
Rolling on some space?
Right, looking at better use of the space, if, are there departments that need more space, should be relocated, could be relocated, could we do something with the space that we have here? I know that many in town have talked about looking at various facilities, I know the elder services need space, I know
Traces, they're over there, and they
Well, we certainly have an issue with the traces program. The police have talked about more space, recreation, so there, there's a number of groups. It's just, you know, in, in talking with Ted and others, it doesn't seem that these would be appropriate, or feasible, so. Any ideas, Irma?
Did Ted talk at all about, I mentioned Mr. Dot today, the HCM needs a new studio. Did he talk about that at all?
My, he didn't, my only knowledge of that was there was a plan to give them a building at the depot.
Yeah, and there's another plan, looking at maybe when we need to town hall, perhaps new from here, because that's gonna be, that's gonna be a project, where there should be so much movement, because the senior center is just busting up space, they can't even hold a lot of their lunches, because there's no space big enough, they have to, and as sad as that is, they have to limit attendance. So that, and the police need more space, but the modulars wouldn't be suitable for that, they possibly could save yourself, but there's nowhere to put them, because you're
Exactly, they have to attach to
Yeah, and you're not gonna flock them in the middle in front of the field, because we've already been through that once. So, the only other thing I could think of is the HCM studio.
Would it be large enough for that?
I don't know, that, you know, and I don't know if the ceilings are high enough, but there's certain
It's been a while since I've been in it, but, you know, some of those uses It's been a while since I've been in it, but, you know, some of those uses, I mean, they'd be great office space.
Yep. But I do, and I think, because I had that going on, and as I remember, it was during the board sale, and it was more like potential other uses within the town.
Right, which is what we would love to accomplish.
Oh, I think it would be great.
Right, and if there's things like, you know, compliance with the building code and lack of plumbing and other things that limit the ability to resell them, kind of is what it is.
But those same things can limit the ability.
Plumbing is one thing, because that can be added.
Sure.
You've got an opening that's too narrow, that's, that's, that's a deal breaker. But there's not enough electricity, there's not the drop ceiling, there's not enough plumbing. They didn't come with plumbing, so that, to me, that's, that's not an issue. It's, you said zoning, and that tells me space or angles or something.
Oh, building code.
Building code.
Building code, yeah, and I'm not sure of the details. So, we'll revisit that at some point in the next couple of months to.
But someone watching TV tonight will call us tomorrow.
Yes.
Solve the problem.
Oh.
Yeah, so, there's, right, there's an item, oh, it's not on the annotated, but it's on the other agenda. So, let's see. Right. Eight point four, right, so, so eight point four, sorry, if you're following along with your annotated agenda, not all of the items made it to that. So, going back to your agenda that's in your folder, so eight point four is the appointment of Pam King. So, Pam King was Margaret's assistant, correct?
Yes.
Who is now Dot's new assistant and our new assistant, who took the place of Nancy, who retired last week.
But in between times, she has been the department head secretary at the high school.
Right.
She's worn many hats.
Exactly. So, we'll welcome her, certainly. And Nancy Cronin has joined us as well, and that's the part-time role.
Yeah, some of you saw her tonight.
It's part of the part-time role.
Right.
It's full-time.
She's full-time.
But she's, she's taking a part of the part-time and half of Vicki.
We're very efficient here. When I left, she can't even take advantage of that summary, that was great.
Anyway, some of you basic have seen her tonight. She's short in dark hair, and we're sitting at the reception desk, if you were here for the early meeting.
And eight point six, SAG report, Diane Halcy, library and media specialist from Plymouth River, retiring at the end of the school year.
Theirs.
We certainly wish her well in her retirement. Also, eight point seven, retirement of Barbara Berucci, a science teacher at the high school. Good luck to her as well at the end of the year. And we have a number of salary advancements due to educational credits earned, as you see there. Eight point nine is a field trip that the high school Latin club is taking to Italy and Greece.
I do have an idea for sure, if anyone wanted to look at it, the itinerary.
Sounds like an awesome trip.
I'd like to go on that trip.
Is that in ancient Latin in Greece? Is that with the connection?
So, this is during spring recess? Yeah, that's great. And now we get to forty-eight hours. Do we have any forty-eight hour items?
We do not.
The only thing I would bring up is, you may recall, I sent around an email about schedule.
Yes.
Okay, so, I didn't forget you, Ed.
You were very kind, I remember.
So, so, if you recall, it was the April tenth date that was an issue? Well, regularly scheduled, school committee meetings, is that right?
No, April fifth.
April seventh.
April seventh is the original.
Ed had let me know that he was going to be away, and not that we necessarily need to change schedules for one individual, but we have made accommodations for one individual in the past, if it's possible. So, certainly, the desire would be for all of us to be present, if we could be. And I think I had sent around a couple of dates, and the sixteenth was the consensus, and I think everybody said that they were available. I think Andy said you just didn't know, but you didn't have anything scheduled.
I, correct. I just know that, yes, I don't have anything in.
Right, neither do I, but something between now and then certainly could be scheduled for that day, but then I wouldn't be available, now would I?
Right, right. My, I guess my point was politely that, in my mind, I keep Monday nights open.
Mm-hmm.
For school committee.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, January, I work with the Thursday thing for, for the budgets, but it gets a little bit difficult when we jump around, so.
I hear you. We don't, we don't have to make the change. I merely, I made the, I asked based on a request that I received and thought I would ask, and then you emailed about another date.
Yeah, well, let's go back to the redoing, or the seventh. I really feel that this has to be not only unanimous, but it has to be really unanimous, and since it's not, then I withdraw the request for the seventh. I just think, you don't change things with just one person. Well, on the same token.
Having said that.
Having said that, I also noted that, what was the other date I asked for?
It was in March.
Yeah.
I don't remember, but it was.
Oh, the school committee meeting on Monday, March tenth, and my sense is it'll be the same, it'll be the same comment, and I don't.
Yeah, and I hadn't even looked at dates for potential.
So, let's, let's, I'll draw that as well.
I'll be happy to change April seventh for you.
No, you know.
Because I can do the sixteenth right now.
It's far enough out that I think we can plan around that. Is that the date that everybody?
That was the date that everyone said. I never got responses from the administration, but they were copying them at all.
Right. I don't remember what it, I know I have a problem with the fifteenth. Dennis, do you have a problem with the fifteenth? I had a problem the same night.
Well.
Yes.
The fourteenth is sure, and the fifteenth was also may not be good.
Right.
The first two nights of Passover.
Right, Passover, right. The fourteenth was the first night.
I did all this, just so folks know, did all this research, found out what the first night of Passover was, and it was all very well orchestrated, so that the sixteenth was a date that everyone seemed to be available as of last.
The only thing I've just thought of all of a sudden, and thought of this before, is typically on the Wednesday before April vacation.
Which is what it is.
Isn't there the League of Women Voters Candidates Night?
It's in March, isn't it in March?
Oh.
No? No.
It seems kind of late.
Yeah.
Couldn't be March, because.
I thought it was in March.
Uh, hold on.
I want to say it's always just before the vacation.
Maybe you're right.
I might not have it in my calendar, but I can find out.
Stay with the program.
That's a consideration.
Can't we just text you during the meeting?
Yeah, I can let you know tomorrow.
No, no, we're going to.
I don't have it.
So, I say we.
Well, why don't we tend to.
How about this, how about this? We'll, we'll agree to move it from the seventh to the sixteenth, subject to confirmation that the League of Women Voters Candidates Night is not on the sixteenth.
But that will be a problem, because, I don't know, you won't be here on the sixteenth. The seventh, you won't be here.
And if the League of Women Voters Candidates Night is on the sixteenth, then we'll keep the meeting on the seventh. Is that, is that fair?
Yeah.
I guess two of you.
We're going to be the candidates.
Be participating.
At least.
Sorry, you scheduled the meeting, and he's not there, wait.
Okay? All right, Liza, you'll let us know? Thank you.
I won't put it in yet, then.
Good, thank you.
You bet. Subcommittee reports.
Well, community outreach, Matt, we are trying to schedule our Fields event for the spring, but it was made in a very challenging month. We have the town election, we have junior prom, we have graduation, we have a holiday, so we are continuing to work.
Senior prom.
Someone's not, someone's not, that's not on a weekend. So, anyway, so we're continuing to look at our calendars and do more, more to talk on that subject.
Any update on policy?
None.
Salary negotiations, we'll, we're going to have an executive session, so we'll talk about that.
Sure, that's what I figured.
Yeah.
Invoices? Could you, could we do invoices? Sorry?
I was just going to say, well, on long-range planning, I did hear from Reis and Bees that Darrenville, we finished, until this Wednesday, going through all the departments, but most likely, they will want us to do some kind of prioritization, you know, of our, and John and I met before tonight's meeting, to take a first run-through of that. So, you know, we can talk after the meeting if we think we need to schedule a meeting like next week to do that.
Anything else on subcommittees? Okay. Then we do, let's take care of, we have three invoices on the Fields, a very small expense for Gale Associates, twelve dollars.
Twelve?
Yeah.
Twelve dollars.
Six.
Yeah, and two invoices from Par Corporation, one, two ninety-two fifty.
That's the Geotech.
The Geotech reimbursement, okay, and one for three thousand nine one four point five two.
Project management.
For project management, that's the, to date, to January.
Yeah.
For December.
That was, that's for December, yeah.
Is that the last twelve dollars we owe Gale, or?
No, it's not.
I mean, because it costs more than twelve bucks to cut a check wrong.
At one point, it cost about twenty-five, I would say now, probably about thirty dollars for purchases.
Would someone make the motion for those invoices?
I'll read it. I make the motion that we pay Gale Associates twelve dollars, Par Corporation, two ninety-two point fifty, and for reimbursement of an expenditure, and Par Corporation, three thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-two cents for services rented.
Cal, the two ninety-two fifty was for Par Corporation for the Geotech services, not for reimbursement.
Okay, for the Geotech.
Geotech services.
Services. That's my motion.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. With nothing else, we do have a need for a breathing executive session, so we'll need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Reasons, strategy related.
To go to executive session to discuss strategy that's related to collective bargaining and not to return to open session.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, go ahead, call.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we're going to adjourn to Dot's office. Thank you.
Thank you.